Dude, I never expected my community to look like a war zone.
Touch the button to begin.
Listening to the social primate and as always, this is your host, Eddie Aguirre. We have the one and only, the powerful Albert Corado. What's up, Albert?
What's going on, man? Thanks for having me. We've been trying to make this happen for quite a bit, so I'm happy to be here.
It's true. Last year is when we first made the connection. Since then, it's been a chaotic time out here.
Yeah, I mean, I think we scheduled our first like thing when we were trying to do this, like right around when the fires started. So it's just like the year got off with a crazy start and then, uh, you know, it's kind of escalated since then. But again, happy to be here. Thank you for having me. I love doing radio and podcasts, so this is great for me.
It's it's an honor to have you here, man. Now, just for people to get a little bit of background, you're an activist, you're a community organizer and one of the co-founders of People City Council, Los Angeles.
Yes.
And of course, a Valley boy.
Shout out to the eight one eight. I grew up in North Hollywood. Um, yeah, I spend most of my time doing community related stuff, activism, um, People City Council, you know, we've become pretty well known for our social media presence and we try to do like political education and direct action protesting at politicians' houses was kind of our first things we used to do back in 2020. And we're just kind of trying to take it to the power structure. And so that has kind of morphed over the last few years, but we're always engaged in what's happening in the streets, in city hall. Um, and so we try to cover as many bases as we can, you know?
Yeah. I mean, one of the things that I've already noticed in terms of the impact that the organization has had is like it's changed the, the way that we approach conversations around policing, housing, uh, and basically how we take care of each other when these systems don't, right?
Yeah. I mean, I think, you know, we started with the kind of mindset of like the more people who know how their city is run, I think it's, it's better for everybody. Cause a lot of what happens at the city level, the way that your life looks on a daily basis, whether it's like if you live in a neighborhood where the parking all of a sudden is gotten worse, or you have to buy a permit to park in your own neighborhood, like little things like that, your commute, like the, the buildings that get built in your neighborhood, all that stuff is done on a city level. And a lot of people just don't know that. They don't know how to make their voices heard, how to get engaged with this stuff. And a lot of it is by design, like the people in power don't want working people to come to city council meetings to advocate for their neighborhoods. It's, it's really, you know, very blatant how they do that. So one of our mission statements is to educate the public and say, hey, you need to get involved in this and whatever route you choose to take is up to you, whether you want to run for office or start a community organization, we are just the ones who want to give you information and then maybe guide you down a path of, of realization, you know?
Yeah. Now, I want to find out what led you down this path. Where are you in all of this mentally, emotionally?
I mean, I, listen, I found my way to this work. I mean, I grew up here in Los Angeles in the valley. I'm brown, I'm a person of color. So growing up here, you always had the, the risk of, of being, you know, beaten up by the police or harassed or being killed by the police, you know, you have all these things that are working against you and like you're surrounded by people who look like you and sound like you. So that was nice, but like, we're all in, in fear of, of the power structure, right? And I think that the moment that everything kind of came to a head for me was in 2018. Uh, my sister was killed by the LAPD at the Trader Joe's in Silver Lake. A lot of people know that, you know, that, that day and that instance and that incident and all that. Um, and I think it was, I was always kind of trying to be involved and trying to be knowledgeable about that stuff. But I think when that happened, I was just like, yo, I need to get involved. I need to take to the streets and do whatever I can to try to get some sort of answers and some accountability. And also again, to tell people, hey, this is what a family who loses their loved one at the hands of the police goes through, right? Like for me, it was always very important to tell people, hey, whatever you might think about this and the way that these things play out, it's not the case, you know? And so when, when my sister was killed, I remember seeing stuff on online where people were like, oh, this family is going to get a settlement and blah, blah, blah. And I learned very quickly that the police don't turn around and just say, hey, we're really sorry. Here's a bunch of money. It's, it's, you have to go and get it yourself. You have to like sue them. And so all that to say that, you know, I think being involved in, in People City Council and my own sort of background in this and my own pain and trauma, I think that's usually what brings people to this movement. And over the last seven years of, of having lost my sister, I've met other people who kind of came to the work in the same way. I've met a lot of people who have lost their loved ones at the hands of the police or the hands of the state, or their family is incarcerated for crimes that didn't happen, or they were framed, or whatever it was, you know, whatever it is, it's, you, you've sort of start to touch the, the roots of, of human misery. And a lot of it is done by the state, by the people in power. So seeing what's popping off in the last few months and in the last few years, um, it's shocking in a way, but it's also kind of we knew it was going to get worse. We just weren't sure how that was going to happen. Um, so I find myself as a survivor of police violence, as, as a family member of someone killed by police, um, I feel I have a duty to do this, um, for my sister, but also uh, for the people who brought me up, who looked out for me when I was a kid, you know, who, who taught me those valuable lessons. I want to teach the people, hey, be careful. This is what you need to look out for. And if you're a family member of someone killed by police, watch out for this stuff. So it's coming from a place of a, like a humanist thing, a, a place of wanting to obviously mess up power and, and get in their face and, and try to take that power away. And, and you know, it's, it's, um, it's a very holistic approach, I think. And, and that's what I kind of try to do, you know?
And now, so from somebody listening to this from the other side of the field, this already sounds radical, right?
Yeah.
And I think when you label something radical, you start associating it with chaos or disorder and whatnot. So from your experience, what has the process been to break and take control back of that narrative?
I mean, I think that if you look at the way that it's currently happening, we're, we're talking before the show started, we're talking about ICE and all the stuff that's happening. That's disorder and chaos. That, you know, people think that it's, oh, whatever the law and the state decides to do is reasonable. Okay. They want to start deporting people and snatching them off the street and picking them up wherever they are and beating them and do, and disappearing them and not even presenting their badges or anything like that. To me, that is disorder and chaos. And people don't see it that way because we've been taught by, uh, by the power structure, by the news media, whoever it is, right? Anybody with, with any influence and, and who is a mouthpiece for the, for the state. We've been told that, oh, well, you basically have to put up with whatever, like these people who are being disappeared are illegals, they're violent criminals, they're this, they're this, they're this. And people start to, whether or not they know it, they start to believe that. And they start to look at their neighbor, someone who they should care about and look out for as some sort of enemy. Or like, hey, you know what? If you take him, cool, as long as I'm good, right? It's a very individualistic thing. It's an American thing. But yeah, I mean, I think that we're losing, uh, certain parts of our humanity because we've been told like whatever, whatever law decides to do, whatever the, the state deems, uh, appropriate, you have to put up with that. And so I always tell people like, um, these are not radical ideas. These are actually very reasonable ideas, but the reason that people think that they're radical is because people can't even dream anymore. They can't even dream of a world that doesn't look like it looks. It's like, okay, well, ICE is going to keep continuing to do this. And at some point they'll stop and then hopefully life gets back to normal. But to me, it's like, it's, it's not, that is disorder, that is chaos. If we're living in a city that the LAPD, you know, they get more and more money each year. And they say they need it because crime is on the rise, yet last year they came and said, we need money because crime is on the rise. It's like this never ending cycle. So to me, what's unreasonable, what's radical, what's crazy, what's something I can't put up with or even think about is the LAPD getting more and more of our money each year and, and having nothing to show for it. It's not as if our streets are any safer, right? People are still getting killed. There's still a lot of, a lot of crimes of, of poverty. Like there's just so many things that are wrong with it. So I feel like people just want to live, there's a comfort in in knowing, in what you know, right? It's a comfort in what already exists. And so people can't necessarily dream of anything beyond what is happening right now. And it's a sad thing, but that's why organizations like mine have to exist because we have to tell people, hey, like that you're not wrong for wanting a better world. It's just like, we have to figure out what are our avenues to, to get there.
Yeah. I mean, one thing that's been playing in the back of my head is, um, like, where are we going after all this, right?
Yeah.
You said, you said right now, like, let's say we move past this, right? Where does that leave us? Like, the ice was already super thin. At this point, that trust has eroded.
Yeah.
To the point of no return. So I'm trying to understand like, how are we going to move as a society or rethink how we enforce protection and safety for people?
I mean, I think that, you know, you have to remember that, that we, you know, ICE, let's say ICE, the, the, the organization didn't exist until after nine 11.
Yeah.
So for us to think that there's some sort of like necessity i- is dumb because they weren't there before that. We lived in a world where police weren't a thing, certainly not in their current form. So again, I, I think some of it is having to dream bigger than what we, what we can. And I think some of it has to be like, hey, we need to offer an alternative structure that, that people won't be scared of. And when you tell people, hey, I think that the current way that police exist, that shouldn't be, that we should get rid of all the police departments and start over. Because of course we want to keep people safe. We're not saying that, that there isn't crime or there isn't a reason to want to be safe. But again, wh- what do we have to show for it? Like truly, what do we have to show from an over policing of every, of everything, right? Oh, homelessness? What's the answer? More police. Oh, public transit? Uh, what's the answer? Oh, more police. It's, we're not going to police ourselves out of this, this problem. I think what we have to do is look at new ways of thinking, because there was a time where somebody came up with the idea of saying, hey, why don't we have a group of people who are armed and who have, um, the authority of law? And allow them to do basically whatever they want. And as time went on, they actually were able to do more and more and have more protections. So we live in a world where that was happening, right? In the nineties, they passed a crime bill. The Police Officers Bill of Rights, it gave police all of these protections that mean if they go and kill you in your neighborhood and you're a bystander because they're trying to kill a suspect as my sister was, they are not going to pay anything. The money that, that gets paid to the families does not come from them. It does not come from the police union or their budget. It comes from taxpayer money. So not only are they killing the people you love, you are then paying that family, um, their settlement. If, if they get one, by the way, they, they don't always get them. So let's go back to that where it's like, hey, the person who sat down and said, we need something, we're going to call it the police, we're going to do this. And think, why can't we have that again by saying, hey, we have an idea that doesn't require people with guns and absolute immunity to come in your neighborhood and do whatever they want. Because over the years, I mean, growing up in Los Angeles, every other week was something on the news about police misconduct. I grew up in the time of Rodney King and the Rampart scandal. And it was very rare when cops actually were held accountable for what they did. So why, why do we have agencies full of people who are never going to be held accountable? If, if we're going to live in a world that is just and right and say, hey, if you do something wrong, you're going to pay a price. You're going to be punished. You're going to do, you know, something is going to happen to you, but that doesn't apply to these people and they're friggin free to do what they want. The two officers who killed my sister are still on the force. They didn't get fired. They didn't get, there was no way they were going to get prosecuted. We thought maybe they lose their jobs, but they didn't. So again, we, we go back to the dreamers of the people who are like, hey, let's make something else. Let, let's go down a path that, that might be scary for some people. But the, the, the whole of society didn't consent to police officers. It was like, hey, by the way, this is a thing now, so you better shape up. And then we had to just do it. And I was born in a world where like, I was taught as a kid, hey, like my parents would be like, if I was acting bad, they'd be like, hey, I'm going to call the police on you, you know, like e- even, even as a kid, you're taught like to fear the police because they can do whatever they want to you. Even if you're a five-year-old kid and your parents are using it as a, as a scare tactic, you are, you know that, hey, that, that actually means something, that, that could be really bad. So I, I think, I think we've lost our imagination, honestly.
Yeah. And a great point to, to bring up is that, at, at least this is from my personal opinion and perspective is that over the last couple of weeks, as we've seen these immigration raids, uh, go hard on our communities. Um, I'm from Southeast LA, like I mentioned, so it's been a consistent thing there. Where, uh, you know, we've seen an escalation of, of the way that they're just the way they're taking people and the way that they're slapping federal charges on others who are legit, just trying to protect their community, right? And this, this goes back, back to the point where I was trying to make about when somebody labels something as radical.
Yeah.
Like, is it really radical to stand up for your community in, in which you've grown up and seen, right? Like, I don't, I personally don't think it is. But they're using these tactics to scare people first and foremost, to deter them away from this and even thinking of standing up for yourself. And as we've seen with a couple of people that I, I made notes of here is Isaiah, Spina, Salcedos, who was detained in Bell a couple of weeks ago, but I believe he was released. We have Anthony Orendorf and he was filming, he was just documenting an arrest and they took him in over the weekend. And it's like, like what? Like now, now you're not even able to record? I've seen videos of now the agents or these goons recording people, like if they were going to, like, like what? Like tactics, right? These are all psychological tactics. Um, and same thing, Alejandro Teodoro Orejana, he was charged with conspiracy for handing out face shields and protective gear.
Yeah.
Like what? Like, it just blows my mind.
Yeah. I mean, it, it's a, it's a classic show of force of like, you know, again, we're in this situation where every day you open your social media and you're seeing videos of people being taken and people are around there. And yeah, sometimes people get involved, they try to get de-arrest them or whatever. And I, I love to see that, but like, again, there is every single time you leave your door, there is an implicit threat of violence on your life, living in law, in, in any city with police, right? So you go to the grocery store, not to steal, not because it's morally wrong or whatever, because at some point you may have to deal with the authorities and you know what they're able to do, right? No one is coming to stop ICE. No one is coming to stop the police from terrorizing your neighborhood. Um, a- and I think about somebody like Anthony, who I personally know. I, I do a podcast about the valley that he was on with his sister Carla, like wonderful, wonderful people, grew up in the valley. He's a great journalist and, and goes on the street and talks to people about like what they're seeing and, and it's really kind of a man on the street, very honest look at what's going on in the city. And to tell you, from someone to tell me that he was arrested for filming something for, again, trying to document a crime, basically, um, is them showing their force and saying, hey, what are you going to do about it? And, you know, we went to the mayor's house on Sunday, a bunch of us, and we protested and we're yelling free Anthony. We were on social media. We had all of our homies call the, the courthouse and, and, and all that stuff. And it's like, we were able to make our voices heard, but like that doesn't always happen. It doesn't always work either. So they're going to keep doing things like arresting people or trying to put charges on somebody for handing out masks at, at a protest. And, and saying that either they're a terrorist or that they are uh, protecting rioters or whatever, because again, who is going to stop them? Because they're able to do that. And Anthony was in jail for what? Four days?
Yeah.
He was arrested on a Thursday, could have got out on a Friday, but was then put in jail for the weekend as well.
Which they like doing.
Yeah, they like doing it. And, and you know, it's that thing of like, oh, you were arrested on Friday night. That means you're not going to see the judge till Monday. So you're in jail for the weekend. That's like a classic thing that people know, but like they, they did that and, and for no reason. And then his charges, no charges are going to be filed. So they put him in jail just to be there. As a scare tactic, I, I saw his mom. She was very distressed. His sister was too. Like we were at the mayor's house on a Sunday protesting when people on a Sunday, that's when you go and you hang out with your family, you go to the restaurant, you, you talk about how your week was, you reconnect, maybe you go to church, whatever your, your ritual is. Instead of them doing that with Anthony, they were outside of the mayor's house saying, hey, we want our person to be free. And to me, that is what the state does to people is like, instead of you being able to live your normal life and, and, and do nice things with your family, you either have to, you're living without them somehow, right? So when I go on Sunday to have breakfast with my dad and we hang out, usually we stop by the cemetery to see my sister first, right? As opposed to her being at the table with us. My life now looks like I have to go to the cemetery and that's just a part of my life. That is something that I have to be okay with. And my family was, I guess, one of the lucky ones because we won a settlement. And so it's like, okay, at least something was done to say that something wrong happened. But a lot of these families, you know, Anthony, you know, I'm, I'm pretty sure he could probably sue, but that was, that's going to take years to get any sort of answer. So they're showing force and they're basically saying, what, what is anybody going to do? These ICE agents who we don't even know who they are, if they're even on an official, you know, they, we don't know anything about it. And like, we just don't know who they really are, if there's any legal basis for it. But again, they're doing it because everyone is scared. And again, we've been told that, hey, uh, you know, the police and, and these agencies can do whatever they want to you. A cop can hit you over the head with a, with a nightstick at a protest and he's going to be fine. You do the same thing to a cop, you're going to prison for years. And then you're going to be like, but then, then you gotta worry about if you're in prison and you're known as a guy who hit a cop. So the system is stacked against everybody. Like, like, you know, the, there was a guy, the, the cop who just died, was it yesterday? On the freeway?
Yes, there was, yeah.
Oh my God. You would think that it was like, like another president got assassinated, the way these people were talking about it on social media, Karen Bass and Jim McDonald being like, oh, his loss is immeasurable. And it's like, where's, where's that when somebody gets killed by the police? Where is that when a beloved community member gets killed by, by the LAPD? Or, or when there's six people a day dying on the streets of LA? Where, where is, where is the incalculable loss there, right? It's, it's again, they like to pat each other on the back. They like to be like, I got your back. You know, Karen Bass is in league with the LAPD. She can say whatever she wants and say that we want the ICE raids to stop, but, but they're acting on, on their own orders, but also with her implicit, uh, approval.
Yeah.
So again, I have to tell people it's like, you know, they're doing this because they don't think that like, we're going to do anything, or that they think that we, they're just going to be able to get away with everything. And I think the more people that stand up and get in their way and, and find out where they're staying, I think that is a good first step into like getting them out of our cities. But you know, it's tough to fight against power because they are powerful. You know, you, you, you go to these protests and like these cops are crying because somebody threw a water bottle at them. It's like, bro, you have pepper spray, a nightstick, a gun, body armor, riot helmet, riot shield, and you're crying about, again, but it's that thing of like, oh, well, I'm the one in power. How dare you even, how dare you even be mad at me right now? It's, 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 you know, I know people who were shot at with, um, less than lethal at close range by the cops recently. Because my, they, they were saying, oh, hey, we, uh, what's your badge number? Who are you? Like, present yourself. Like a thing that you're allowed to do. And he just, he hit them all and they're, they got injured. Because again, who, who's going to go and, and tell him anything? Karen Bass isn't going to do it. No one, and again, if you sue the, the, the power structure of, of the court system is going to make it so you're in that thing for, for years before you even see the inside of a court. So.
Dude, man, I, I was telling you before, um, we went live was that, um, I had a a very crazy experience, uh, the day of the Paramount raid that was happening a couple of weeks ago, which I think followed the Santee Alley raids, I think like on a Thursday or the Friday before.
Yeah.
So Saturday morning I woke up and I saw that there was, uh, they were already tear gassing people like around nine AM in Paramount. And I was like, what? Paramount? That's like 10 minutes away from me. I got into my car, drove out there to see what was happening. Uh, and when I got there, there was a couple of, uh, police blockades, maybe about a mile out from the Home Depot where this was taking place. And then this industrial place across the street.
Yeah.
Um, I got there, there was maybe like three blockades and every time I passed one, there was one that was controlling traffic. And then the second one was trying to stop people from going through to like the main area. Um, and they had yellow police tape. And when I got there, there was maybe like 10, 15 people and they were all trying to cross the line to walk on the public sidewalk.
Yeah.
To get to this area, right? Uh, and there was a group of five sheriffs and they were like, yeah, we can't let you pass. It's not safe for you guys. We're trying to protect you. And to me, the first thing that I noticed from that was just like, how, like, what makes you then think that they get to decide what risk you can take, you know, at the end of this?
Yeah.
I'm sure it can be dangerous, but at the end of the day, it's my choice if I want to put myself in that position. They were super strict. They didn't want anybody passing until these señores came out and they started saying like, no, this is our city. This is a sidewalk. This is public. This is a part of our rights. And they started kind of like getting a little heated and the cops started kind of surrounding him. And then he keeps kept saying like, vamos, gente, no los pueden parar a todos, you know, let's go. And like, not to minimize it, but this felt like a movie scene, dude. It felt like Bugs Life, like
Yeah.
Your eyes were just like, oh man, they can't stop us. And slowly, one, two groups of three people started going through the, the line.
Yeah.
They couldn't stop 20, 30 people, five cops. So they're just like, all right, well, let them walk. It felt empowering first and foremost to just defy what you know is right, right? But when I'm getting there, I start seeing a gang of people, like 60 people just walking towards me, coughing, rubbing their eyes, eyes are bloodshot, they're tearing. And I can smell the tear gas and I'm not even close to this. And then my throat starts itching, dude. And this is one of the first times that I've personally been in contact with this kind of chemical, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
So right when I'm there, all the cops, the sheriffs, they're all scared out. They have their non-lethal guns ready, all that stuff. And, um, actually I missed a completely important part. Before I got there, the cops opened up the path. There's nobody crossing, no cars, nothing. But they opened the path to these two Ford Explorers. They passed and we're like, wait, who is that? Oh, we don't know. Well, what agency is that? The street's blocked off. Oh, we don't have that information. Like, we don't know who that is. And we're like, well, that's your job. How do you know what my job is? Dude, that's your job. And eventually they ended up saying, look, we were just called out here because we were here to just block the intersection. We have no idea what's going on. And that to me felt like a betrayal of, of, of trust. It just felt like, dude, you're lying in our faces. Like, how could you do this, right? And this is after they announced that police aren't supposed to be enforcing immigration law.
Right.
Right? And this is when I start thinking like, they're using language as a proxy to remove themselves from it, but they're still enforcing it.
Well, I mean, well, think, okay, but think about this, like they're saying, hey, we, you can't get past here because we want to keep you safe. If you went past that, they're going to hurt you. Like those cops are going to do some, they're either going to detain you, throw you on the ground. They're going to hit you with the less than lethal, like it, so in that moment, they're saying, hey, we're trying to keep you safe. Oh, but by the way, if you go here and you go against my, my orders, I'm going to hurt you. So in a, in a way, it's like, well then you just wanted to hurt me. Like, you know what I'm saying? Like you're not actually preventing me from, from being hurt because you know, i- it's a weird thing that we get into where it's like, okay, bro. Yeah. You want to keep me safe, but if I, I don't listen to your orders, I step one, two out of line, you're going to hurt me. Like, so then you're, what's your, what's your purpose? And I think that moment of, of you said like, like a Bugs Life, it's like, I think if, if this is what we try to do with People City Council and what a lot of organizations do is try to build like some class solidarity. And we say, hey, you know what? If half of the people in this country sho- stop showing up to work, like a general strike, things would change very quickly. But unfortunately, that, that's, doesn't seem like a possibility right now. But you're right. In those moments, it's like, those old men knew like, hey, we, we outnumber them. And yeah, maybe they have guns and cars and all that, but ultimately still, you know, there's what? 9,000 LAPD officers and what? There's four million people in the city of LA? Like, we've sometimes forget that. And I think that we are a very well-taught populace where it's like people are like, oh, hey, um, oh, you, you're, you shoplifted, shoplifted from that store. I'm going to call the police on you. Like we've been, we've been taught to, to snitch on each other. We've been taught to surveil each other. So the state doesn't even have to do it. We, we're doing it for them. Like, you know, if, if they see somebody shoplifting from Home Depot and then a civilian tries to stop them. It's like, brother, you're not like, you, who, who do you think you're serving? Like, no one's going to say, hey, man, good job on that. They don't care. Like they just don't. But we've become people who like, who are, uh, in some ways fine with selling their own people out as long as you're okay. Some of that is capitalism and all that, but some of it too is just like good old fashioned propaganda. And we're seeing people right now basically say, yeah, that's messed up, but as long as it's not me, then it's all good.
Yeah. And I've had a few interactions of people where you're, well, I'm describing what I saw at the Paramount thing. And just to wrap that up, the part that I was like, what the F on there was there was protesters already on the road. They're using tear gas and smoke grenades to kind of clear the path. And when the smoke starts clearing, these, these immigration cars start zooming down the street, dude. And people are just like trying to get out of the way. And this guy is just swerving like a maniac. He gets to the blockade where the cops, where the gear were. They need to obviously clear space. So people surrounded and started hitting the car and all this stuff. And the cops just come in and they're like, hey, get back, back up, back up. They clear it and they let the car just leave like nothing. And this continued for hours, dude, where they're just dispersing in the crowd by throwing a few grenades, distracting them so all the cars can take off.
Yeah.
And it, that was that, that moment for me that I was like, dude, I never expected my community to look like a war zone.
Yeah, man. I mean, yeah, I, I got tear gassed, uh, three weeks ago outside of the detention center over there in, in downtown and like, yeah, I don't know. I, I know that these things happen. I know, like, I know not to trust anybody, but it was just this thing of like, how am I, how am I the one that's in the wrong here? Right? Of like, how am I who's advocating for my community, advocating for like there not to be secret police who can just snatch people off the streets? How am I the one that's unreasonable? Why? You know, when I got tear gassed with a bunch of people, I mean, it hurts so badly. Like I'd never, you know, I had, had a little bit here and there, like at other protests, you know, you feel, you cough or it's like, oh, your eye like feels weird. But this was full on in the face, like tear gas. And I was just thinking like, man, I'm, you would think that I was, I was trying to like murder these cops or something. I was like, no, I'm, I'm there trying to fight for people to be brought home. But again, there are people, regular people who are not law enforcement, who think that what we're doing, going out and, and advocating for our people and trying to get them free or whatever, or trying to get our communities more money and taking some from the police, that that is terrorism, that that is like, you are a, a crazy person. And, and, but a lot of people buy that. I mean, I have family members and I don't know if it's the same for you, but you know, there is a contingent of Hispanic people, Latinx people who are like right wing. So I have cousins who are like, yeah, you know, Trump is going to get rid of all the, all the illegals. And I'm like, who do you think your parents are? Who do you think your grandparents are? Like, have you, you know, but, but again, it's the thing of like, you, you turn your back not only on your own people, on yourself. Like you, you become an agent of the state. Like, these are people who will happily see someone they don't know be kidnapped from the street. And again,
Yeah, not bad a name. Yeah.
Not bad a name. And, and, and you know, this is what we're dealing with is like, we need to have solidarity because the Latinos who voted for Trump. have solidarity because the Latinos who voted for Trump, like, you think ICE cares that you voted for Trump? They'll take you. As as long as you look like like a person who they wanna take, they'll take you. Like, bro, I I even I am scared of like, I walk my dog at night and I'm like, just making sure I'm keeping my eyes open. It'll be hard for them to take me. I weigh two eighty and I'm six feet tall. Like, have fun with that. But you know what I'm saying? Like, there is still the fear in me of like, I I may be taken too. And that to me is like, I wanna protect people from being taken. But you know, we live in a world where you're seen, where people like that are seen as getting in the way. People showed up to Dodger Stadium the other day uh trying to get get in the way of ICE agents. And there were people from the mayor's office saying, hey, are you guys cops? Like, why are you interfering with the federal um operation? It's just like, you know, but but again, this is what we're dealing with. It's like, we're dealing with people in power. Karen Bass, who will sit there and say, oh, I'm I'm liberal. I care about this. I care about that. And her her staffers are saying, hey, are you a cop? Like, what's your problem? It's it's this is the LA that we live in. We we can't take care of ourselves. The fires break out and you find out they took money away from the fire department. You know, it's just like, it's it's a joke. It's a joke.
Yeah, I mean, it's unbelievable what we've uh got into, right? Like this is a tipping point and it's only a matter of time before this escalates to a point where there's definitely no return from it, you know, and that definitely puts some fear in me because you already see the tactics, everything that they're pulling out of their playbook to, first of all, turn people against each other, right? With there's already tension and now it's just going deeper. But what I'm trying to get to though is that right, they're using these tactics where no matter where you turn, it feels like you're being watched, right? Like, oh, man, okay, I'm not gonna do this because I'm scared. And they're winning when we do that.
Yeah, I mean, it's a it's a giant operation. It's a giant machine. And here's the thing too, is people in power will always side with each other, even if they don't necessarily agree with each other in in the big way. Like Karen Bass has a lot of power. So she can sit there and say that she doesn't want Donald Trump to bring ICE here, but ultimately, it's it's that saying, right? It's a big club and you're not in it. Karen Bass is in power. The people in city council are in power. LAPD is in power. And ultimately, at the end of the day, they're always gonna side with each other. Like, if if you know, if Karen Bass is given the opportunity to stand with the people or stand with the interest of of the state, she's gonna do that because ultimately, that's the safer option. It's the more lucrative option. And it's it's where you're able to live a live a good life, right? Like, you and I are struggling, everyone around us is struggling, but but people who and that's the thing. I think one thing that I wanna mention is like, the reason people are snitches on each other or or, you know, talk about why we should support the police or whatever, is that they think they're gonna be safe if they do that. They think that if you advocate for the people in power, that somehow you're gonna be like one of their one of their homies and you're not gonna, when the when the trucks come to take us all away, hey, by the way, I I was I was good. I told my friends to support you. They don't care. If you're not somehow part of the ruling class, they will they will get rid of you. And that to me is what people are forgetting is like, you're not one of them. It's 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 these Latinos who who think that they're white or like think that, you know, if they if they appeal to the white man, that the white man's gonna accept them as one of their own, like, brother, they don't like you either. They they will use you for for things. They will they will keep you close to make you feel as though you count or that they're gonna be good to you i- if if things, you know, escalate. But but that's never the case. People think they're safe by closing up to power, but power destroys everything in its its path. That's what it does.
It's disheartening to hear all of this, right? But I I wanna say that I at least, you know, seen this from an optimistic point of view. I see silver silver lining of this. Today, I went to go get a haircut at the barber shop in Carrejé and um I was talking to the señor and to the guy cutting my hair. Apparently, they were uh father and son. But they were telling me how um although all this stuff is happening, he says, yeah, orita estuve caminando, I was walking down the street and people were asking me if I was okay, if I did something. He goes, I've never seen that. And I was like, that's crazy. And I was like, yeah, I feel like these uh the fear of these raids is unifying people. And I was like, you know, that's a it's a crazy way to put it, but it's definitely something that I've noticed too with just my community, right? The rapid response networks that they're building. People are patrolling, looking out for each other. And this is something that you don't, I personally didn't necessarily see maybe during COVID when people were offering themselves to kind of get groceries and do stuff for for families that couldn't go out. But um it was definitely a moment of of of, I felt power in a powerless world that I we're in right now, right? Like, okay, our community is looking out for each other. We're seeing that we need to unite. We need to see past all this BS. And that's how we protect each other.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, you know, we always say in the movement, we keep us safe. And I think that like, so on the one hand, it's it's very bleak to say, I think I said this to you before we were live on air. I said, you know, no one is coming to save us. And I think that if you look at it, if you look at that statement in a vacuum, it's it's a scary thing. Like, oh, we're on our own. But again, we are legion. We have we have so many people, so many brilliant, amazing people who can like look out for each other. And I think that that is what's gonna keep, you know, I'm optimistic about things. I I think I tend to speak a little bit more on the cynical side because I just see how things work. I ran for city council and saw the inner workings of of the machine and all that. But I do think that we are that's what it's gonna be, is the community rising up and taking care of each other and saying, hey, you cannot take this this person. Because there is this narrative of like, oh, you know, we always have to say, you know, the mom who was taken by ICE, she was like hardworking. Who cares? Who cares? Like, who who's sitting around? Like, do you do you take stock of all your friends who are hardworking and who are not? And do you do you treat them differently? If one of your friends is 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 lazy and doesn't do anything and you know, smokes weed all day? And and do you do you look at him differently than your buddy who is a hustler and rising and grinding or whatever? Like, no, they're people. Who cares? And I think this narrative has to be stripped away of like trying to prove that we belong here, trying to prove that we are that that we should be treated like human beings because we we somehow make someone else money. Oh, like she, this person had three jobs. Like, that's not a thing to be proud of. That we shouldn't, that shouldn't be a thing. Like, so people shouldn't be taken from their their communities because it's the wrong thing to do, not because they somehow add value to someone's life that that we'll never know or some corporation. So I think that we are ultimately gonna be the ones who get us free because the people in power, again, they're always, you know, they have solidarity. That's the difference between movements in communities, there there might be infighting, you know, rival gangs or families that don't don't like each other. That's normal. That's human. But even the people who disagree, who are in power, are always in solidarity. Like, I protect you and your interests and you protect mine and my interests. Karen Bass takes care of the LAPD, LAPD takes care of her and ICE and everybody else. So we need to have that kind of undying solidarity of like, yo, whatever happens, I got you. And when we live in the world without police, which I I do truly believe in, what's gonna get us there is is standing together and not, you know, that that's when the existential question happens of like, okay, no police, what is the answer to keeping us safe? We'll get to that when 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 the day comes. But to, you know, I think people wanna say, well, oh, you don't want police? Well, give me your your ten point presentation on on what the solution is. And I'm like, I don't have to have that, man. All I know is that I can point at ten things that don't work about the way things are currently run and and tell you that it needs to be done with. So, you know, yeah, no one's coming to save us, but we are stronger than than anyone can imagine. We are, you know, we in 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 twenty twenty, People City Council, we raised two million dollars. And we gave uh most of that money, yeah, it was a crazy thing. We gave most of that money away to organizations that needed it, that that were gonna do good with that money. And instead of giving it to like, oh, we're gonna give it to like the Democratic Party or like some powerful thing, we're like, no, we're gonna give it to community organizations that are feeding people, that are teaching people skills or or teaching them um all sorts of things, right? It was that for us, it was like, yo, that is what what it means to like live outside of the system. Because the system wants you to be a a perfect little soldier who's gonna snitch on, who needs to be snitched on and who's gonna like take whatever scraps they give you. We we I think there's something beyond that. And standing with the old men, like you said, or standing with people at a at a rally, to me, is more powerful than anything. And that's where I found like most of my dear friends in my life have come from that movement. Where it's like, yo, I love you, you love me. We have been in trenches together. I have homies who like, we've been beaten up by cops together. I've gone and been in dangerous situations with them. And that to me is what 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 sort of forges a friendship. It's like you are my, my, you know, that's why we we say camaraderie, because it is a deeper connection than, oh, you're my friend. It's like, no, we are we are working towards something. And standing in line with people and and um having solidarity, I think, is is what's gonna get us to where we need to be. Because is someone in power gonna turn around and say, hey, you know what? You're right. I'm gonna I'm gonna pack up and I'm gonna go. LAPD is not gonna be like, yo, yeah, you know what? You're right. We're really unpopular. Peace out. My friend Hamid Khan, who who um organizes with uh Stop LAPD Spine, great organization, by the way. He told me, you know, we were talking months ago and he was like, yeah, you know, the LAPD has been uh touting this thing of like trying to win over and win back the community. And he's like, it's been for a hundred and fifty years. They haven't been able to do that. So like, maybe you're just not gonna be the, you know, like, there's just something inherently wrong with like you know, you broke down the trust of of communities. I I don't know, man. Like, personally, like, if if someone in your life betrays you, but like in a really deeply hurtful way, how likely are you to build that trust with them? You know what I'm saying? Like, so so yeah, so if you're the LAPD, the the sheriffs and you're going in and killing people who we love, and and by the way, doing that and then just acting like it's okay? And not even, again, not that them saying anything would really change it, but you can't even pretend to care. So you think that our community is gonna be cool with you? Like, like, again, you know, we have to think about this as as we are the reasonable ones. Everything else around us is what's unreasonable. The LAPD and the sheriffs, they have all these gangs in the sheriff's department? That's unreasonable. That to me is not, it does not, you know, smell of something that that is good and reasonable. That that to me smells like a criminal organization. But, you know, they're cool and they can do whatever they want, but the the guy handing out masks to his 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 folks at a protest? That guy's a terrorist? But again, we we we've we've swallowed this, not to sound all like conspiratorial, but we have swallowed a lot of stuff from the mainstream media being like, yeah, you know what, um you know, it's like when you see those stories about like, oh, the this grandma works three jobs to, you know, afford her place. And it's like, that's not a feel-good story. Like, oh, this kid in 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 Virginia raised money so he could pay off his school's lunch debt. And it's like, the fact that a kid has to pay for food at school is the issue there. Not, you know, like, but anyway, what, sorry, I'm kind of getting, you know, off on a whole thing, but yeah.
But I mean, these are great points, because I mean, first of all, I remembered what I was gonna say.
Okay, good, good.
So Unión del Barrio and Chirla, and I believe there was another organization that was getting uh investigated or something. I forgot the the right terminology, but because they were providing the funds to apparently, you know, supposedly protest, all that stuff. So they have them like, or I don't know if it's still in the process, but they're having them get all their records from November till now. And it's like, what? Like, that's exactly another fear tactic that they're using here, right? Organizations that are out there on the ground helping people, like legit helping people, they wanna shut them down because they know, you know, it's the language. Again, when they say illegal immigrant or criminal, like, these are just words that are that are used and played with to their benefit.
Dude, and 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 think about this, right? They're trying to get people, regular people who are who are involved in these things and say, you're you're this, you're that, you're a bad person, we're gonna arrest you. And you have a lot of the people in those instances somehow being tied to money being sent to Israel to carry out a genocide. So the guy handing out the masks over here is a terrorist, but the rogue nation state that's murdering children and bombing hospitals, that's okay. Again, like, you tell me in in what reality that is okay, that that's that is something that we can say is okay. You, this guy watching out for his people and giving them, you know, protective gear is is somehow the one who's morally wrong here. He's the one who needs to be punished, not the people who are supporting people who send money to kill people like that, right? It it doesn't make any sense, but but again, you talk to people who are semi-normal or who people who are not involved in politics or whatever, and and they have those same opinions, like, oh, those rioters, those protesters, those looters, it's all this, this very heavily charged um language where it's like, oh, you're you're out there, you're protesting, you're you're Black Lives Matter terrorist organization. It's like, okay, but by the way, Israel's cool and it's cool that they're killing Palestinians. And and there are so many people, not hopefully any of our friends, but there's so many people who think that somehow that's morally okay. Because ultimately, it comes down to who can you dehumanize? And and who can you sell on that dehumanization? So if you sell the fact that Palestinians aren't human to a lot of people, they're gonna, you know, if you sell it successfully, you can do whatever you want because you you you've manufactured the consent, right? You can say, hey, this, this and this, this is why we're doing this. And if people buy it, then they buy it. And then it's a it's an effect that multiplies. And so again, you have people who are like working at McDonald's and and are barely scraping together a living, saying, yeah, I think what Israel's doing is okay. And you're like, what? But that is, but that's how nefarious this stuff goes. It's not just people who are in power. It's not, you know, politicians are bought and paid for easily. The people, if you get the people, that is the ultimate sort of like trick is like getting the people who, you know, it's a guy, the guy, same guy who works at McDonald's or works three jobs saying, oh, yeah, you know, Elon Musk, man, I love that guy. Or like Jeff Bezos, brother, you're not gonna be a billionaire. And you defending them like with your life, again, people are susceptible and I get that. And and the propaganda machine is going twenty-four seven, so I don't blame some of it kind of seeping through. I mean, if you, I guess if you talked to me when I was twenty, I probably believed in some stuff that was probably I was very happy to vote for Obama, I'll say, like, the first time. Because again, I was told like, hey, hey, he's black, he's gonna be the president. That's never happened. And I was like, yeah, cool. But I didn't know at the age of twenty that every president was a war criminal. You know, like, it took me time to do that. But again, I was just some little guy being like, okay, I believe in gay marriage and I voted for Obama. So I I did my my good work.
Did your duty.
Yeah, I did my duty and I'm a good person. And let me pat myself on the back. And I and oh, by the way, whatever might be happening in other countries because of whatever, it's not of my, none of my concern. So it it's just, you know, I mean, I think people are more savvy these days than they ever have been because there's a lot of information. There's a lot of teaching going on. There's a lot of people critically engaging with this stuff. But there are other people who are who make it their business to inform people in a way that is manufacturing consent for genocide, for war. You know, you you have, they're bombing Iran and it's like, again, oh, it's cool. Yeah, Iran i- is is building nuclear bombs. You've been saying that for thirty years, but, you know, whatever. It's just
I have one last question before
I'll try to keep it brief. I know we're 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 running against the clock.
Uh but before that, I mean, one thing I I wanna wrap up and and just for the people that uh have been seeing this through their screens, you know, if you haven't had a a chance to get involved or anything in any form of, you know, any any shape or form, what do you recommend, right? Because we all have a role to play, you know, we all can go out on the streets and protest. We all can do different things, but we could set ourselves on one thing and kind of use that to spread this message. Like, what what do you suggest for people who who are feeling paralyzed by this?
Yeah, I mean, I always, you know, when I first started joining the movement, I was kind of like, where do I belong? What do, you know, what can I offer? And I think that the answer I found is that you, first of all, you belong in the movement. If you care, if you have a heart, if you know that you wanna somehow help and and you just don't know how, like, you're already at 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 a good point. Because that means you're willing to learn, you're willing to be taught, you're willing to join up and and do something. And I would say whatever talent you might have. So I would say my talent that I like to bring is I can I can talk on a microphone. I can go in front of people and talk. And if I believe in the organization's platform, I can talk about it pretty pretty well and and convincingly. So I'm like, okay, cool. I'll I will do that. I have friends who are graphic designers, who are editors, who work in film, who work in, you know, photography, like the movement is everywhere, right? It's 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 online, it's through academia, it's through pop culture. Like, we have to use everything in our toolbox to get people to think like we do, right? To to teach them. So whatever you think, you you know, think about the talents you have and somehow try to use them. I would say the easiest way is look up in your neighborhood, who's doing, who's already doing the work. Because if you have an idea for an organization like, oh, I wanna start an organization where we go and and we um give out food to to the homeless. I mean, great idea, but there's probably already a few places who who do that. So you're probably better off going and helping them out rather than trying to start from the ground up and and do all that. There's usually an organization doing that kind of work. So I would say plug in with them, ask around about like where, what their need is, like, hey, um you know, where can you use more people? Do you need more people to do social media? Do you need people to do, you know, get on radio stations and talk about it? So bring your talents, uh put them up for, you know, to be used in in whatever way is necessary. Go to meetings, check out the organizations, get in contact with people, make yourself indispensable. And also, you know, the one thing I have to say to people is is be willing to learn. Like, show up and 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 just humble yourself before. Because again, you're and 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 just humble yourself before. Because again, you're, if you're offering your talent, great. Like, I'm a really good whatever, but also remember, like, you don't know everything. And there are people who have been who've been doing this work for far longer than 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 you. And I met a lot of people who've been doing this kind of work for thirty, forty years. So I don't pretend like I know anything near what they know. So I always remain teachable, always remain humble and all that, and and be willing to help and plug in where where people need you, because that is what it what it ultimately comes down to. So yeah, look around you. There there, every major city will have something happening. Sometimes it's through a church or through whatever, but get involved and and usually find mentors and they they will guide you. That's what I did when I first started showing up. It's like, I found people who were in this game longer than I was, who pushed me towards the direction they thought I was gonna be useful in. So, you know.
Now, that's powerful, man. And then, again, I feel like what you just brought up is a perfect way of of getting people who have been feeling paralyzed, who have no idea of where to begin. And even people who maybe they were for this, but now they're seeing the reality and they're changing their mind. Like, it's okay to feel like you were wrong, right? Like, that's that's key. And and to change your perspective. And I want to end it off on this note that, you know, again, being from Southeast LA, we saw um stuff happening just everywhere, right? But for me, in my proximity, was Bell, Maywood, Paramount, Lingwood, the variety of different different spots. But at the end of all this, after the chaos was done, it ended up with people congregating, showing up for the community because they knew what was happening and it was wrong. And to me, there was nothing more beautiful and energizing and empowering than being on the ground with the community as they were trying to push back. And all the people, all the all the stuff that people were doing were just dancing, playing music, chanting collectively. And that to me was so powerful because even with these violent tactics, even with this chaos that we're seeing, there's that resilience to be optimistic for the change, right? And then trying to push forward. So, you know, I I hope this conversation can bring some sort of relief to some people or at least turn them on to something. Because that's that's all we got, you know?
For sure. Yeah. I mean, that that's the, you know, what we try to do. This is tell people that there is a work to be done, but but you have a lot of support and people are here to be there with you, man.
Albert, thank you so much for making the time to come out here. For people who want to learn more about you, about the organization, where can people find you?
Yeah, so we're on Blue Sky and Twitter and Instagram, People City Council. We're pretty easy to find. We've got a lot of followers. Uh, we're constantly posting about stuff going on in in, you know, local stuff and and national. Um, you can find me, Digital Ash, on Instagram, uh, Digital Urn, U R N, on uh Twitter. And I do some podcasts. I have one called All Valley Everything about the San Fernando Valley, because I grew up there. I love it. I do one called um Oops All Bangers, which is about people's favorite albums. Um, and then I do one called People City Propaganda with a couple of my organizers in People City Council. And that is kind of like, we don't do it as often as we want to, but we have people on who are luminaries in the movement and people who are who have stuff to say about the movement. So try to do that. And yeah, I mean, catch me around town. I'm I'm everywhere. Um, see me at a rally, say what's up. Um, but honestly, just get, try to get involved in your local orgs and and show up there. But yeah, People City Council is kind of the main thing. Come mess with us. Uh, we're always doing stuff and we try to you know, educate the masses. So.
Hell, yeah. That's all we could do. But thank you, Albert. Thank you so much for this. And I hope to, you know, stay in communication and contact with you and we'll see what, we'll see how this turns out.
Cool, man.
Thank you very much. Everybody, you're listening to KQBHLP, Los Angeles, California, one oh one point five FM. Peace out.
Check, check. Fuck MAGA. That's on every dead comrade killed by America. Free all the ones locked behind enemy lines. We dream broken dreams, but we make them come true. It's the phenomenal one Jaguar. DJ One Foot on the turntables, Aspect the Aztec. Made a threat, rohohos I see you. Spit liberation, decide what you wanna be. Decide what you wanna be. Colonial borders, genocide, the slaughter. Decide what you wanna be. Spit liberation, decide what you wanna be. Decide what you wanna be. Colonial borders, genocide, the slaughter. What you wanna be? Still wearing this mask. I won't unlace the unknown or reward. Those who are patient, they were hella undercovers at my arraignment. I was in the county with the rasa africanos and the woodpile. They charged me with conspiracy to make me look foul. Spit liberation, we came to do the damage. If you're not fully sober, then we're at a disadvantage. Face twenty mathematics. European accountants can't figure out this math. It's fire, it's Mayan. I'm with Anak Bayan. Don't respect police sirens, made myself self-reliant. Criplicals face on a Nephilim giant. Decide what you wanna be. The underworld is calling me. I know I'll be missed. Until then, I'm in that cipher, spinning green mist like Tijeri. Sober for the blitz, so I see it all clearly. Spit liberation, decide what you wanna be. Decide what you wanna be. Colonial borders, genocide, the slaughter. Decide what you wanna be. Spit liberation, decide what you wanna be. Decide what you wanna be. Colonial borders, genocide, the slaughter. What you wanna be? Proportion biblical lyrical revelations. I'm pushing forward, I'm spitting for liberation. Removing borders created by the Caucasians. Demand an order for Palestine and the Haitians. Demand an order for all of the Lord's creations. A lot of countries are suffering from invasion. Colonization, gentrification. Bring a genocide to a whole fucking nation. No explanation, the reason why they do it. Our people going through it, they poison all our fluids. Ain't no stopping the movement, we're dropping the blueprints. They thought that we were stupid, but I'm far from a student of the game. It's a shame how they treat us, locking up all our leaders. Got more strikes than Adidas. United, they can't beat us. This is for the non-believers. He fight until they free us, liberate every family. Spit liberation, decide what you wanna be. Decide what you wanna be. Colonial borders, genocide, the slaughter. Decide what you wanna be. Spit liberation, decide what you wanna be. Decide what you wanna be. Colonial borders, genocide, the slaughter. Self-determination in this white supremacist nation. Orange powdered faces, trying mass deportation, trying to reenact. Operation wetback. If you ain't strapped, get that. They wanna send us all back, so move diligently. Decide what you wanna be. Fuck the hooda, sober up from the hooda. Back to our natural compass, back to discipline. You got this. Broke my heart, up in court, see my boy shackled down. Just got word of undercovers in the crowd. We ain't slouched, really bound. Setting tensions, lessons, blessings, trenches. We jumping fences, hestas, movement, moving righteous. Bravery, unity, tired of impunity. Working class consciousness, batwack CEOs drowning all they own blood like we drowning in debt, fighting to live.